All right. So the meeting in order is thirty thirteen, August twenty third, twenty twenty three. This is regular meeting with your great city council and we have camp again today. So meeting is off the word. Will Ryan please?
Mayor, if I may, for the moment of silence, I would like to address retired marine, marine veteran, Louis Jones. He lives in the city and he lives in the area Wood Creek North. He's lost his home, he's lost his past. It's a very sad situation. He is getting help from the community, but let's take a few seconds to think of Mr. Jones and his loss, in particular since he is veteran of good years.
Thank you.
Help you need. The flag of the United States of America and three republics which stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, a flag which takes you to the city. One state under God, one entity indivisible.
Thank you. Mayor Jeff Raffco.
Here.
Mayor Potem Raffoey.
Here.
Councilmember Linnea Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Drummond.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Hamer.
Here.
Councilmember Deborah Hines.
Here.
Thank you. Do you have some public comment? What do you have you want to put here? Do you want to do your?
Absolutely.
I know that the. And then Kate, Sarah and Marissa will go before I have number one. And David Jacobson. Jake. Public comment?
Oh. Bottom of the list, I thought it'd be last.
You just can't.
Oh, thank you.
Do whatever you want, right?
I can throw that part. I'm Jake Jacobson, I live at Twenty Shades Grove Lane. On Brook Meadow, Wood Creek, Wimberly, et cetera. This will be my tenth statement regarding fire, fire hazard. Over ten years ago, the city of Bassdrop and its community had a canopy that looked much, and I repeat, looked much like our canopy looks now. The trees cover, or moreover, they had this severe undergrowth under the trees. There's been a councilman here on the city several years ago that actually lost property over that Bassdrop fire. I believe that action needs to be taken by the city to assist as well as enforce property cleanup, tree maintenance, et cetera. I say this because it's not only a personal opinion, but speaking with the fire marshal and also the chief fire in Wimberly. They're having a lot of serious fires due to the season during the severe drought. I witnessed the fires in the Kyle area and all property was lost. The fire was started, it finally found that one place, and one of the places was started with a hot muffler over tall grass, people that were pale mowed it off. The grass turned into weeds and subsequently caused a fire. We have a situation in our town now, I make comment. I believe that Mr. Rule is working on it. But we have some people in some property that just don't care about driveways or gravel or anything else, and they like to park their cars on the grass. And I photographed one the other day, I submitted it to the state, where a car on a hot day just left. And grass tall enough to reach the mufflers was parked. Later, the same car was parked with the hood up, meaning it's being repaired, I guess, but it doesn't make it any safer sitting in the grass. But I asked that they implement, there used to be a rule, I didn't realize until recently, has been changed, that the grass in the area had to be mowed down to six inches or better, and now I understand something foot. I'd like to see it go back to the other, but moreover, is that they initiate programs by which they notice that the violator that's parking a car on grass. I don't care if they park in the backyard, as long as they're in tall grass. But the point is, is I think for safety reasons, we do not want, and I'm making this statement, I want to go on record that I do not want to see the town of Wood Creek end up looking like Bassdrop did after their fire that was avoided. This problem is avoidable, and if we take a stance on it, I see that the documents for today's agenda are primarily about drought. This runs right alongside of it. Mayor, if you can, this runs alongside of it. Please, let's take action and cause our area to become safer. I've had an opportunity to spot Bob. Kevin, we need to get it fixed. So I ask that, I submit these ideas, and if there's any other questions, I'd be available. But please, let's stop a fire.
Thank you, David. Looking into the business of the day, something on the calendar. The report from the office, the health liaison, if your, if your bird didn't be one of the last two weeks, and they don't have four, they don't have four, but there's several things, and no reports. Or do you?
None.
Parks and Recreation?
Yes, sir. They met last week, and two things on the agenda, the first being where things are in terms of buying the pieces, and almost all the pieces have been bought or very close to being bought. The other was spectacular and setting up each one of the tasks of those who are involved in this. So we're still two months off, so it's good to be here.
What, what is the date of the spectacular?
Saturday, I think the thirtieth of October, thirty.
Twenty nine.
Twenty nine.
Twenty nine.
Sunday, the twenty ninth.
Yeah.
October, Sunday, the twenty.
Yeah, there's a little bit easier. Thank you. Glenn and Ruth?
We did meet not too much new reports, but we went over the status of the contract and the time schedule for construction. And there were various positive changes to our contract that I will let city manager Rule describe. And I talked to Eric Jones, who's been a help to the city for many years, supervising roads, road construction in Hayes County. He was very pleased with our choice of contractor. He said, they have a finesse, we do city streets for one, we need one another, and right started. That's all.
Thank you. Crib board, Mayor.
She makes the report, we did meet on August fourteen, we planned a meeting, especially meeting on August twenty eighth. Meaning what we're working right now is the Arbor Day event on November fourth. It's going to be at the Triangle, there'll be various events, including educational opportunities about local children. For that, that's November the fourth, I believe that's a Saturday, so keep that in mind, and we'll let you know more about it this fall, so that's all I have.
Thank you. I do have a few things I want to just bring to the speed on, work that I've been doing. I haven't been doing these mayor reports, and it's just gotten me like, why not? I'm gonna be sort of bopping around doing mayor stuff and the deal. So a couple of things, one is, I'm affected to have a new regional communication director. We met back on the sixteenth, has got the communication plan with them that's ongoing. Working on the stepic issue above Patrick's Point, building the hallway through the golf course, and the back line of that line was a mess, it's being, being fixed, it's almost completed. We line law prepared, we're going to schedule the start in October. Type one of Lumen, which is an upgrade from what we have, right now there's a process in the type two. The new plant at the end of next year will process the second one, which will be able to use really throughout the valley. I did, I failed to mention on the meeting with the PR communication manager with Aqua, a couple of things I talked about, the things we'd like to do is put together a dedicated website for Wood Creek, City of Wood Creek and Wood Creek North, to be able to better communicate with this, this group. I mean, they're definitely on their radar, and including when they have a contact button that you can push and go to their offices and post that stuff, et cetera. We have ongoing meetings with the Western Hades watershed protection plan, which is the watershed association, Hason Groundwater Conservation District, the Meadow Center, Longchelle County Commissioner in Wimberly, and we're talking about things that we can do valley wide for water conservation and to work with Aqua to get them to make their goal of line, line loss mitigation, if that's the word should be. Also ongoing meetings with the city of Wimberly, our counterparts in Wimberly, the mayor, mayor of town and city manager, we regularly have for almost two years, every month, looking for areas of collaboration. And it does look like we're trying to find a way to maybe share municipal court, and that just doesn't look like it's going to work out, they basically do municipal court. So we'll take that on ourselves, but we did agree on a communication plan for conservation that instead of, you know, we're sending out something instead of, hey, save water, and we're really pushing out something, and the county pushing out something, and now we want to push out a, you know, nice bookie communication that's brought to you by the city of Wood Creek and the city of Wimberly and the county base. So that's in process. Our search for the new city attorney is going well, our key planner of August, interviews are next week. Been attending planning meetings for the April, February clips, which, which has been very interesting, the meeting with, with local leaders and emergency management and county. So that's, that's going to be very, very interesting down in April. Working with golf courts and other stakeholders on the AM there at Wood Creek, trying to make improvements there, the pond behind it and the roadway. The ultimate goal is we would like to have that pond behind that dam on Wood Creek Drive to pull a separate point, become a natural area of wetlands for my current town, which love it there already. And with the type one of fluid, we can keep it for a while without, without anything to talk about. So there's two more things that are what I call our kitchen cabinet, that on the tenth of August, that's all the chairs of all the boards, meetings, missions, met at my, at my home, and we talked about that. So we talked about water in the place. And then we are meeting with the saving contractor tomorrow, and stakeholders for Canyon de Ya, for the golf course, and for Cypress Point, to see if they can negotiate a favorable contract for some payment they want to do while our road are being finished off in September. So anyway, that's, that's my report. Mayor Rule?
Thank you. We have filed the FEMA paperwork for the ice storm that was due this past Sunday, so we have submitted that into FEMA. Once it gets approved from FEMA, then we have to get approved with the state by basically sending the same information. So, but we have submitted paperwork for FEMA. Rust pickup is officially over, thank goodness. The golf course has finished all their pickup, so the, the final totals were the initial winter storm, waste connections picked up for twenty nine days for a total of six thousand seven hundred cubic yards. When we had the rust pickup in July, just a couple of months ago, two hundred cubic yards was picked up, and then the golf course cleanup, there were twenty dumpsters with eight hundred cubic yards was picked up. So we are done with picking up limbs. As Mayor said, we are looking to hire the, the attorney. We have interviews next week, and hopefully those will go good. The Rose project is, is moving along, don't have any dates yet, but we have met with Alpha, and we have another meeting next week, have not signed the contract yet, but it is favorable in our regard according to price, so that is good news, I will share that once the contract's signed. The candidate selection for the part-time co-administrator, he accepted the position, and he started this past Monday, August one first. So we have a part-time co-administrator that's working on all the permits that the city handles and also any co-violations. We sent out an email for the Hayes County Sheriff Officer requesting if anybody wanted him to or her to use their driveway or front of their house to sit for speed violators. We had twelve responses, so we have forwarded that onto the Hayes County Sheriff that does our patrol in our city. And then city hall will be closed Monday, September fourth, quarterly day. And that is all?
Thank you, Sarah.
First of all, let me just ask you with the new, the new co-administrator, is there a process by which people have a complaint or an issue, is they can address it in the city, or just calling, fill out a form, send an email, how would they activate that process to get a new person involved?
Yeah, they can send an email with, with whatever complaint there is, weeds or high grass or truck vehicles or tree trimming.
Code admin.
Codeadmin@woodcreextx.gov is his email address, or you can forward it to me, manager@woodcreextx.gov.
Okay, so.
We can get there, we don't have it on the, we just got the email today. So that, that will be going on the, on the website, but you can send me an email or him an email or call to city hall, and it will be routed appropriately.
Okay, no, it's changing taxes to you.
Correct.
Like progress, but you know, but still know, and.
And with all that, if you have pictures or documentation that assists us in the process of what we have to do legally for notification.
His last question on the driveway, having folks give us permission for people for the law enforcement officer to park in the driveway, we have twelve responses, are we going to keep, you know, sending that out, trying to get more responses, or?
Yes, we can, we can do it maybe once a quarter, whatever you feel is appropriate.
Is that available on the website, or is it on the social media account or how they access?
They emailed us to assist it at woodcreextx.
Okay, I heard you guys, if anybody, you know, would like that, would like to help us out, speeding problem here, doesn't mind, opposite beam on your driveway, on your radar, please let us know, big help to him, it gives him different angles to try to help slow people down.
Yeah, just, just so they know, it's not against either, he'll come there, I mean, certain areas are of course better than others, and so, but we, we do give them all the addresses and available that I'll add, so hopefully, yeah, they'll take advantage of that.
Thank you.
Give me a question. All right. We have no special committee reports, we have no special orders, we have no unfinished visits or general other orders, we have a new visit, and the Roman item is, does not take appropriate action on a proclamation in January, September twenty twenty three, five months to Wood Creek. And we do have some, then we get to sign up the speed. Good now?
Yes.
Thank you for your time. I'm Kate Frostwee.
Thank you.
Oh, is it recording?
Okay. I see.
Thank you for your time. I'm Kate Frostwee. I've been in the Wimberly Valley for ten, more than ten years, and I'm also a committee chair of the Wimberly Pride March, which I've been involved with for the last five. Our committee requested the Wood Creek will claim the month of September as Pride Month, as the city of Wimberly has done for the last five years. You may ask why there needs to be a Pride Month or a Pride March? Let me request that you think about this. Has there ever been a Supreme Court case decide if you have the same rights as others? Have you been denied healthcare, denied adopting a child in need into a stable, loving home, denied a job that you perform well, denied getting married, denied being present in the hospital room as your partner dies? Denied being able to access social security after the death of your same-sex partner of over forty years? Denied being able to make health decisions that are inherently and deeply what is right for you? Denied living your life just as you are, who you were born to be, in a manner that you know is right, good and healthy? If not, you have privilege that queer people do not have, or as recent legislative actions have shown, can be taken away at seemingly any time. You are inherently safer in the world, safer from persecution, safer from being pushed to the edge of society, safer from losing your job, safer from not being allowed to live your life in the matter as you wish, safer from serious health conditions, safer from risk of suicide, safer from mental health issues. You are looked upon as being a better human, you are more successful person, a person who is just good. There are record-breaking anti-LGBTQ and especially anti-trans legislation happening right now, which are having very devastating impacts to the queer community, your community, right now. Our actions, this proclamation in the Wimberly Pride March, are meant to challenge those homophobic and transphobic actions. We want Pride Month to change hearts and minds, bring forth love rather than fear. Fear that beguets hate. We want to show love to our queer community and support those who are persecuted, attacked, denied rights because of their real or perceived sexual orientation and gender identity. We, the Pride March Committee, thank you, the city of Wood Creek, for standing with us and showing support for justice and equality for all.
Hi, thanks again for having us, and Sarah Taylor, I've been in the Wimberly Valley area for almost three years, but have swam in the blanko for all of my forty-one. Grateful to be here. This September, our Pride March will be the fifth march that we've had in the Wimberly area. Wimberly Pride March goes beyond just the forty, and our LGBTQ plus community members, it uplifts our community as a whole. People seek our Pride March for a smaller Pride experience, which in turn brings people from all over Texas. From the years past, we've had anywhere from over five hundred to over nine hundred people come visit us that weekend. And all of those people are coming to support local restaurants, our shops, bringing in money to the town. It's a really great event. We have events Friday through Sunday, with the march being on Saturday, the sixteenth, so we invite you to follow us on our Facebook page, Wimberly Pride, our Instagram, our website, if you would like to come. We welcome all, we're fully inclusive. This year, we'll be starting in the Oak Park and Welcome Center, about seven PM, Saturday the sixteenth, and we will end at the new city building just past Community Pizza, and all of that information is available on our website. I would like to briefly read the words of one of our younger committee volunteers that grew up here, so this is me quoting them. Speaking of someone who's spent a lot of time being a queer teenager in Wimberly, seeing people show up in support of the Wimberly Pride March is incredibly life-affirming. It makes me feel like I have a community and I'm not alone. I can only imagine how much more self-acceptance and awareness I would have had if this marching organization had been around when I was growing up. To see yourself in your community as someone who is accepted and loved and not alone is a gift that everyone deserves. Let's all show up together and make sure everyone understands y'all really does mean all. Thanks, perfect.
Marissa won't be talking.
Marissa?
Yeah. I have a question. Yay. Hi, my name is Marissa Thaler. Can you hear me all right on the mic? I moved to Wimberly pregnant with my first son in two thousand thirteen. I've been raising two children, and this is the only town that they've ever known. We did start living in Wood Creek, so I, I miss Wood Creek a little bit, I do, but I am now in the city of Wimberly.
You missed it a lot.
Oh, I missed it a lot. That's our, that's the mayor here. I just wanted to make sure that we're all reminded that Wimberly Valley Pride has always been family-friendly. There's people of all ages who come to the party, and it's just a beautiful event. So a lot of times, people think of Pride as wild and chaotic and twenty-one plus, but Wimberly keeps it family-friendly. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, I'd like to read the proclamation, first, I want to thank Kate, Sarah and Marissa, for speaking today and reminding us, this is. I want to thank Marissa and Sarah and Kate for speaking today and reminding us that this is about love for each other, and it's about acceptance for each other. You know, I think that's, that's well said, and I sure took it to heart, so thank you. So I'm proud to read this proclamation as follows. City of Wood Creek Pride Month proclamation, whereas the city of Wood Creek recognizes and proclaims the month of September two thousand twenty-three as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender and queer questioning Pride Month, and whereas all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights, LGBTQ individuals have had measurable impact in the cultural, civic and economic successes of our country. And whereas the city of Wood Creek is committed in supporting visibility, dignity, equality for LGBTQ people and all people in our diverse community, whereas the society at large increasingly supports LGBTQ equality that is essential to acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to indiscrimination and prejudice, whereas this nation was founded on the principle that every individual has infinite dignity and worth. And the city of Wood Creek calls upon the people of this municipality to embrace this principle and work to eliminate prejudice everywhere where it exists. Whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for the developing GTQ community, is an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue, strengthen all alliances, build acceptance and advance people rights for everything. Now therefore, be informed that the city of Wood Creek hereby proclaims the month of September two thousand twenty-three as Pride Month and invites everyone to reflect.
Very bright.
Okay. And invites everyone to reflect on ways we all can live and work together, commit, cultivate respect, compassion and understanding within our beloved community, witness whereof, we appear to have fixed the seal of the city of Wood Creek this, actually, twentieth, the twenty-third day of August two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you. Will be my, my privilege to do this properly. So, make it right. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
If I, this is strictly a proclamation, it doesn't need to be going around at that direct. Okay. Can I make a statement anyway? Well, you can. As I see this resolution as supporting the city of Wood Creek's commitment to equality, equality and diversity, I'd like to confirm that the city will also recognize other groups within our community, such as persons with disability, older Americans, of which the city of Wood Creek has a very large population. such as persons with disability, older Americans, of which, uh, the city of Wood Creek has a very large population. And also support and encourage cultural diversity. So there are other important dates, uh, and days and months which need and deserve to be recognized as well, such as Black History Month, uh, Women's History Month, Asian Pacific American History Month, Hispanic Heritage Month, Disability Pride Month, National Senior Citizens Day, um, American Indian Heritage Month, and International Wednesday. All of these should be also recognized. And we would welcome, you know, any other organizations to come to us with, um, with our request to be recognized. I do know that we'll be doing, um, Constitution Week thing. And they've already come to, uh, our daughter, to the American Civil. Um, so yeah. And then it's, it's a, it's a particular pleasure to introduce you, um, City Manager Rule, Adam and two proclamation experience that we have that... Do you like different things?
Thank you. This is a, uh, resolution for the city and all citizens for the second annual CYJ City Wood Creek Fun Day. That's going to happen September tenth, twelve to five in the afternoon. Um, CYJ is generously opening up their, their doors and letting the residents of Wood Creek, um, come in and use their pool. And so we will have, uh, refreshments from about twelve to two, I believe, and then maybe something that, at three or something like that. We are still working on the details. But please come to CYJ on, um, September tenth, Sunday, um, from twelve to five. Enjoy the swimming pool, uh, get out of the heat, enjoy this fine facility and, um, CYJ's great hospitality of being a good citizen here in the community. So this is what this resolution is about.
I'm excited.
I am too.
Yeah. March of August, September tenth. Um... Read the resolution.
You can just vote on it. I don't know if you really need to...
I mean...
You can read it if you want. Yeah, we read it or you want to?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. This is a resolution of the city of Wood Creek test to supporting Fun Day at CYJ. Whereas the city council of the city of Wood Creek and representatives of Camp Young Today are delirious and holding a day...
Desperate.
There are...
Delirious.
My glasses.
Not a leader.
Delirious. And holding a day promoting strong and promoting a strong community. And whereas the city council of Wood Creek and representatives of Camp Young Today recognize the importance of working together to provide a day for the community. And whereas the city of, the city council of Wood Creek and representatives of Camp Young Today see the need to bring the community together for a day of relaxation, entertainment, and corona.
Am I correct?
Yep, that's it. And whereas city council of city of Wood Creek and representatives of Camp Young Today also see the involvement of the corporate partners, utility providers, and other interested parties provide the most exclusive participants as the Wood Creek Day can provide. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Wood Creek hereby adopts the following resolution that... Section one, the city of Wood Creek and Camp Young Today shall hold the second Fun Day at CYJ. Section two, the city of Wood Creek and Camp Young Today will jointly sponsor the second Fun Day at CYJ, the tenth day of September at Camp Young Today. Section three, this realized, this resolution shall be effective immediately upon its pass.
And, uh, this resolution does have a, my pass and approve, um, so I would, uh, I would entertain, you know, motion to approve the resolution. Mr. Mayor, I, um, make a motion that we approve this resolution of the city for CYJ. Free Fun Day for my person.
Second.
Secondly, by councilman Heinz. Any further discussion? Vote on the motion.
Councilmember Linnea Bailey?
Aye.
Councilmember... Councilmember Bob Hammer?
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Heinz?
Aye.
Mayor Lieutenant Drumpley?
Aye.
Thank you.
He's walking in the door. We can get around, but we have four, you know. So it, uh, that's four ayes and a may. All right. So moving on, um, going to, um, go work on later. The manager.
Thank you. So we had the, uh, budget workshop last week. Um, council had some suggestions, so we went back through here and made some adjustments. So kind of where I want to begin is, is, listen, don't mind us talk about the adjustments, what we changed from last time, and then we can go into any other questions that you may have. If you look on page nine in your binder, um, the first thing that you notice for it, for the bottom is the transfer to capital. That got decreased to forty-nine thousand nine twenty-five. Um, that is because the vehicle got taken out of the capital, and so, um, that's why that number was reduced.
What kind of truck?
Truck that was in the capital. And so, uh, we are no longer purchasing a truck. Um, if you look on page eleven, uh, I was instructed to add fees for municipal court, and I'm expected to, uh, get that in here this year. So I went back and looked at previous years that we had the municipal court back in nineteen and twenty, and so roughly they were showing about a thousand dollars. So I put that in there for, for the income. So that's really the only thing that, on the income side, that's the only thing that changed is, is a thousand dollars plus the fifty-five thousand for the pickup truck. That's the fifty-six thousand. So that fifty-six thousand was redistributed, uh, into the, uh, expenses of the general fund. And if you look on page twelve, the, uh, first thing to change was city hall maintenance and repair. That is now eight thousand dollars. That is for city hall to get some, um, rain collection devices and hook that up to our current, um, eat that we have in there to collect rainwater. So that, that number got increased. Um, on page thirteen, the Oakville assistance is now fifteen thousand. The green space maintenance is now seven thousand five hundred. Landscape maintenance is now seven thousand five hundred. If you look on page fourteen, uh, we have six thousand for a municipal judge, uh, nine thousand for municipal court costs, and eight thousand for prosecutor. Once again, I look back in, uh, nineteen twenty to see how much they spent.
Nineteen twenty?
Correct. Nineteen, two thousand? Yeah, two thousand nineteen, two thousand and twenty was the last year, the last two years that we had. I think that was the, the last time we had it. So I was trying to gauge what they were doing back then. So that's, that's where there's, those numbers came from. So we still have a, a, a balanced budget of, uh, income of nine hundred thirty thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars, and expenses of nine hundred and thirty, six hundred and eighty on the expense side in the general.
Okay. I have one moment. Um, moving forward, I would love to see those changes clearly documented, meaning like last year, what we did was you could see where the number had been, five, and then the new number. So just you can see from meeting to meeting and track those changes more clearly. Um, so it was just a little bit more example for everyone. I, your document is beautiful and I kept notes, but, um, just so that there, you know, it's published as well. And then I did have a series of, uh, comments. Is this a good time to go?
Sure.
Okay. Uh... We, I'm not seeing, we talked about adding a fund for green building initiatives as far as like rebate programs, things like that for the city. For the breakaway, probably anything like that, I'm not seeing that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I didn't see an item for the traffic calming study that we were talking about doing, uh, so we maybe need that as a budget as well. Um, I did not see a rolling funds for parkland acquisition and street maintenance. We've talked about those things in the past, about specifically the street maintenance that's been coming up for a couple of years of, um, creating some sort of way to annually deposit funds for the long-term capital improvements that we're expecting. Um, we've a couple of times asked for that cost plan item to be retitled at the bottom, because it makes it look like we spent a ton of money on a cost plan, but we didn't. So I don't know what, uh, a better name for that would be, because it kind of covered, uh, several different projects for the year, but it was kind of keep appearing every year. Um, I think we need to, to retitle that. I'm talking about on page fourteen. And again, we don't have the numbers on these items on the left-hand side, so it's really hard to like direct you to an exact item. Typically in the past, we've covered them on the ground, and I know you're working on a cost insurance, that's why they're not there. But even if it was just like a way to like number them just for these meetings until you get that outline, that would be pretty helpful. We have a plan to address Oakville on Stonehouse Circle, and we were supposed to be moving forward with hopefully some testing, at least of the front yard for residents there. Uh, and so I guess that would just be covered under our, our full budget. Uh, that would be needing to happen as well, because of prime time to start, um, addressing that. That was a communication project approved for this year by council previously. So I don't know if you want to pull out and separate that, earmark some funds for that, or some of the Oakville testing is free, but sometimes there is a cost there. So I can get costs repeated, but I wasn't clear what the plan was there. Um, I'm also a little bit concerned about the amount for street signs. Um, we have a lot of stop signs we need to replace, and I realize that could potentially come out of the, the bond money, the front of road things. Uh, we're still planning to buy those radar signs. We have asked that there's a full citywide review of existing signs, and potentially the platinum panel would be working with that to see what other signs would be desirable throughout the city. Or needed, like a curve ahead, or those kind of things that we're, we're lacking in some areas. Um, we also have some things that are still purchasing pending, for example, the pardon you pregnant sign, the dark skies drive safe and controlled neighborhood signs. So I just, I don't know if thousand would really cover all of that, um, but just the thought that that might need to increase. Um, I am... Oh, uh, we talked about setting aside funds for the land survey and blocking trail. If we were to move forward with implementing kind of pedestrian safety, we would start needing to set aside funds for the planning and mapping of that, or even like holding a town hall to discuss that kind of thing, or like a grant fund match. Uh, we're looking for grants right now. We have viable options that could be really good for us, but every single one of them require some kind of grant fund match all the time. And I know we have fifty grand grant fund match already set aside, but that's for the block grant, I believe. Okay, but...
Which block grant?
The community block grant required a set aside amount, and I saw fifty...
Community. You mean for Deerfield?
Yes.
That's not in there. That's fifty, that does not include Deerfield. Deerfield is in cap.
Okay.
It's already taken.
Okay, so that other fifty grand into other grant actions.
That's whatever we do for that this upcoming year. It does not include Deerfield's twenty-five thousand that we have held, held here this year.
Great, that was unclear to me, sorry. Um, and the last thing we, we've talked about is, um, if we do move forward with any kind of, uh, fund, sorry, my pen just is leaking. Um, if we move forward with any kind of code review or restructuring process, which we talked about, that might be needed. Uh, there's pretty hefty legal and con- complications we've associated with that. Um, and we don't have anything budgeted for that, so I don't know if there's a plan of where they would come from. It would potentially not impact next year, since that could be a pretty time-consuming process, but if it did, we, we don't have anything set aside to, to plan for that. And so if we want to address some of these things, with budget amendments, if they come up, I'm okay with that, but these were just items that I've had pending from our discussions the last six months to a year.
Um, yeah. Oh, go ahead.
Do you want to, do you want to address or point to?
Well, I just added you and then maybe...
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. First of all, um, the very last page, and I know it's got seventeen, seventeen, it says forty-five thousand traffic on, so that is in there. And the walking trail, we talked about including that, and so that hadn't been done yet the last time. Um, see, that's not first. I don't believe that's from study, or it should be made clear, it actually worked, or a study, or a walk. Okay. Uh, and then... Uh, I'm just used to financial status. So on page five, um, often expensive, looks like it's gone up a lot, but you've got funding and you've got website design. Why aren't those capital? Isn't it used low?
Yeah, I got it. Uh, we could capitalize those if we wanted to. I just choose not to. I mean, we can put it in capital if, if, if you want to move it into capital. But not all that money is the one-time expense for setup, um, on both of those. Um, that's the total annual and the setup for the first year. So I just included it in there.
Okay. And I know empty capitalized, but you guys depreciate it.
Yeah, and, and, and with the government accounting, though, the general fund doesn't get capitalized. It, it does on the back, I don't want to complicate stuff. It gets capitalized on the backside, but it's not shown like a utility fund. Like if we had a water system or a wastewater system, we would show depreciation or depreciation, it would be counted in the expenses. But in the, if you look at the, the financials on the government side, there's no depreciation that listed. Now, when you, uh, in the CAFR, they convert the general fund to ask if it was a enterprise fund, and that's when they add in the depreciation. But it, it is not included in the normal, uh, financial status for a general, for a, a government entity of the general fund, only for the enterprise fund.
Um, also, let's see. Why don't we have a balance?
With, uh, the assets and the weekend.
Accounting systems are brilliant, and like, they, they don't let you make mistakes, they're against about, uh, the theme that. So if you just include that, um, can you explain again why the forty-nine nine-two-five was transferred to capital?
That is for paying for the free capital items that we have in there this year, which is the, uh, three thousand for the generator, twenty-five thousand for the traffic calm study, and twenty-one thousand nine twenty-five for walking trails.
I'm sorry, I missed page twenty-four. I'm just now seeing it. I don't know how I called that. So I do, just to clarify, that page twenty-four has some of the items, not all of them.
This is my, my, um... And on that last page, this is the last one. There are some items that seem like they should be moved around, or, uh, so I'm capital, general capital fund of four point nine million.
Mm-hmm.
Will these funds be distributed differently, um, once we're into the new year? I think it's...
The, the two...
Still...
Yeah, the, the two twenty-seven on Chip Seal project, um, we haven't done a budget resolution, but it will be in the last, uh, council meeting in September when we, um, do a bunch of account cleanup for the budget. Uh, that will be moved into the, uh, roads deal bond, and so we will pay, uh, the road, the road project with two hundred and seventy-seven thousand cash. Or we can move it into, um, what I call unallocated capital, and you can, um, it, it can sit there, but it's used for a capital project if you ever wanted to. But it would have to be voted on as a budget amendment, uh, to move it into whatever...
Calming instrumentation if, uh...
Correct, yeah. You could use it. Correct, if, if council sold shows, they could do a budget amendment to move that money to whatever line item is currently listed, or whichever one they come up with, or new project.
Okay. The existing fund value is seven hundred and seventy-one thousand? Okay, do you want?
That's the projected. Now, that is what is what I consider unallocated funds. Now, you also have money in the general fund that's out, that's, that's allocated to the different funds, such as the reserve funds, such as... That's that's allocated to the different funds, such as the reserve funds, such as the art funds, are not included in that number.
Uh let's just have a couple of things. And we we already talked a little bit about walking trails. What, what would we get for twenty-one thousand nine hundred and oh, sorry. What would we get for the forty-one thousand nine hundred and uh twenty-five dollars for the walking trail?
I have, I have no idea. Uh they wanted money for walking trails, so we put the remainder amount in there. Now, that that money can be used for engineering, it can be used for studying for walking trails, whatever, but it would be towards whatever needed to be done for walk. So it could be the construction, or it could be the engineering surveying, it could be for a maximum grant fund, or whatever. But no, there is no specific hard dollar where hey, X amount is for walking trails, or this is how much it's going to cost.
Okay, and the Deerfield Road Resurface, that's assumed that we're going to give them that money for the community uh block grant, is that correct? They don't have that money yet.
Correct, we do not have that money yet. We have twenty-five thousand in that fund, uh but we do not have the half a million. Um that will come sometime uh, we'll know November or December, but we'll see, we'll see that. So it'll be after the fiscal year that we'll number out.
So would we possibly just go ahead and do Deerfield and get reimbursed because of the additional money that's already in the co-bond then?
We would, yes, we would, we would use the, whatever was remaining in the uh bonds that we uh passed the roads and recently issued. Uh let's say something horrible happened, and we got denied that CBD grant. Uh yes, we would use upon council's approval in in platinum roads, but we would take care of Deerfield. Yes, we would. All roads will be paid.
Moving, one quick point. Um only thing is, we're paying about two hundred and eighty thousand a mile for our existing contract, three hundred thousand. And Deerfield is about a third of a mile, so that five hundred thousand includes a lot of drainage. It includes a lot more cycles.
Correct.
Not like you're just gonna add it to our contract. We want that cycle done.
Right, but Deerfield does have a bunch of drainage issues, you'll take care of it. So it's not just painting, it's it's much more tail, but just put it that way as well.
Were there any other items um that were
Well, I don't know, this, yeah, this this is council's budget, so you know, green spaces, no, there's nothing in there. Um art land purchases, no. Uh the comp plan, you can name it whatever. The problem is that the fake, when they were categorizing this stuff, they put multiple stuff together that I would never look together. And so the comp plan was the last thing that happened in that fund, because before we had, I think it was called miscellaneous or something like that. I mean, I could think of that for miscellaneous, if that helps you out, that's, I mean, there's no whatever, we'll change that. Um oak wilt budget, uh the only thing that we have is the fifteen thousand. Now, if you want to add more, you're, feel free to do so. Um street signs, yes, we have a lot of street signs that we do have to purchase. Um you know, I would suggest let's get caught up on a lot of these issues before we start adding more to our list. I would like to try to get some of these off of the the to-do list before we start keep adding stuff on. Um I will tell you, we're looking to add those stop signs once the roads get paid, because they are actually putting in the correct hole that Jack Miller and Augusta Lane, the breakaway ones, instead of just putting in a hole, not a hole in there. We're gonna go with X dot standards. Um the land survey, walking trails, you said that it was, you saw that. Uh code review, no, we don't. So if this is the time, if you wanted to add, let's say, you know, let's say, hey, one fifty thousand for parkland acquisition. We can put it in there, you just have to tell me what line item you want me to reduce by that. So if you want fifty thousand in parkland, you have to show me where, or tell me, and council has to come to some kind of agreement that, hey, let's take it out of this line item, or these line items to get that fifty thousand.
You know, I would, I would like to um suggest that we look at the degree building, because that was one of the areas that I I said that wanna put something in there so it would go back to our other stakeholders um to say that, you know, we're, we'll put up X number of dollars. Um but, you know, but you do it well, and then and then figure out the program to get ring over people. Whatever the problem with that is right now, we don't know what that is, so I didn't have to submit it from out. Um but uh but it is something that I think we're going, we're going to be talking about next year, so.
And you can always do a budget amendment, when we actually have numbers, we'll just have to
Okay, well, we want to put, we want some fifteen thousand dollars, like, help citizens get float, float, or or ring, or whatever it happens to be that we forgot to deal later. That's fine, we just have to find, was that, was that, was it a logical place where there's money that is not fully allocated and we didn't care part of that?
Right now, nowhere. This is a balanced budget where I expect we should be pretty close.
And that would be a capital, those would be capital.
Yeah, that would. Um but you know, it it that's the, you know, if we get along and let's say we do want to have a, you know, a toilet exchange. Yeah, we can figure, okay, well, we want uh two thousand dollars, Aqua's gonna give us two thousand or whatever. Um so we need to come up with two thousand. So either we can reduce a budget line item, which we'll know later in the year which ones are over and which ones are less. The problem with this budget, if I'm perfectly honest, we don't have good uh alloc- not allocation, um recording of expenses in the correct category. There are, like, I think expenses are in three different places, and so
Believe me on that.
It was, it's pretty close to, and I had to unwind all of that, so um next year will be pretty spot on, just for the the new software system and me doing the the coding and and doing the line items. But uh you know, next year, you know, if we have to come up two thousand, we could, two thousand is not a big number to find.
Yeah, I'd be able to, if I'm gonna sit down with, you know, Water Show Association and Aqua, um you know, PEC, whoever, and say, hey, what can we do to to help our citizens with these things? You know, then we know where the number is, and
Right, exactly. We can, now, I could, you know, I can find two thousand. It's hard for me to find fifty thousand. You know what I mean?
No.
For 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 a bigger kind of project, but you know, we could surely do whatever we could come up with, but it could come out of unbalanced. I mean, that's, that's always an option, or if our expenses are graded, then, you know, we wouldn't have to take a lot of unbalanced, or if there's expenses a lot less, then we can use that. Um but right now, I mean, I I validated what I believe was fiscally impossible in the budget. And so, you know, if you do want to add, now's the time to do it, and and once again, this is yours, y'all's budget, so if you want numbers changed, let me know, because it is not mine, it's y'all's.
Yeah, but your point that, you know, if you want to, if you want to change something here, you gotta have a place where it's going to come from.
Correct.
Um which has always been kind of sort of my mantra, which that I've I've managed. Like, you want to do that, it's fine, but what improvements then, over that?
Correct.
You know, tell me, tell me where it's going to come from.
Right.
So that's, that.
We only have X amount of dollars, and so, you know, I'm I'm glad to change whatever y'all want me to change, I just need to know where to.
No, I think the budget looks good.
Yeah, please, Ben. Just a couple of questions. Really nice, thank you for doing all that work. Um question I had, the, I'm in here with the Treeboard Committee. They were concerned about, you know, treatment of Ozwell in runaway park areas, in island areas and whatnot. There is a fifteen thousand dollar application, can I tell them that's what that is directed toward at least in the part?
Yes.
Okay, but uh I don't want the Treeboard man to miss it, thank you. And I appreciate it, I didn't, I wasn't at the budget meeting, but I appreciate you uh including the the Hayes County Sheriff's Office patrols on that budget item, and also for the traffic common study that we looked at initially, so thank you for doing that, but other than that, that's all I have, thanks.
Yeah, let me, let me go back to the, the traffic common study, that is an actual quote that we got. And that is only to identify the places that the city may or may not need traffic common. Um it doesn't, doesn't include any implementation or anything like that, it's just kind of a a report, there you go, therefore we would put something down. Uh I don't even think it includes what they would put down, it's just like, this would be a good place.
One short comment, sorry.
Okay, go ahead. I just want to make sure.
Okay, um last time there was fifty-five thousand in the budget for a truck, and then we discussed it, and then it was out. But there was uh, everyone seemed to be approving of a leased truck.
Yes.
Input, so that forty-nine thousand, have you allowed to a leased truck?
No, the, the, the court fees and the other uh expenses uh right now, it's more prudent to use those for that to get a city vehicle, even on the lease side. We will continue to look into that, and maybe next year's budget will be, will be forwarded to that opportunity. But like I said, there, I mean, right now, there's not any wiggle room, and so I wanted to put the most stuff that I could in the expenses that council wanted. And so that's why we look at.
Alright, so um so if we need to
We don't have to do anything, unless there's somebody wants to change something in the budget from what you're seeing today. Um this will be the budget that comes up of the meeting, which will be September thirteenth. And then at that meeting, we will have the public hearing for the tax rate, and we also have the public hearings for the budget. Also, in those meetings, you will be voting on the budget, you will be ratifying the budget, and we'll be approving the tax rate on September thirteenth. The next item that's on here is the the post-tax grade. And I'll talk about it.
Yeah, we did.
Um so, as far as the radar signs that we've approved to purchase, do you feel they're gonna be purchased in this budget year, or would it be in this following year?
This year.
Okay, so we don't need that to define them.
They're just two, from my understanding.
Four, four is what was approved.
We, yeah, we originally
Okay, four approved. And and then where were those going again? At the front?
At all entrances to the City of Wood Creek, excluding the ex- not road, road not road.
So down.
And then one on Champion Circle.
One on Champion.
It was not, okay, I I can send you all of it again.
Yeah, I just from Champion Circle.
There was one on Champion Circle, I can send it all again.
Okay, well, we need to know if the entrance, like, before Champion Circle or after Champion Circle, because we need like
After the eagle again, because the direction was essentially for a specific spot to be determined by staff based on basic standards for where they need to be, and if you look, we already have speed limit stop signs installed where that's supposed to be. So these could actually even be either replacing existing speed limit signs with a radar and speed limit sign, or
So that's depth direction where we put those, as long as they're at the front entrances?
Um yes, the exact locations were determined, but not like a, through the pinpoint on a map, if that makes sense. So um I'll record you the email again. Um and so I want to stress the important Green Building Initiative, what's more, as Mary Rossett stated. Um I noticed the mowing situation used to be lighter, and then it looks like it's projected to be higher this year. It about doubled. Um you feel six grand is absolutely needed there because of like playground, or why, why did that jump?
One, because the playground, yes, they do not currently mow um creek side.
Okay.
They just do the edges, and and you notice, we 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 will be looking, um you know, one of my um past visits to look at all contracts, that is one that we will be looking at next year. That number can change, but as of right now, that is the number. So yet, you know, you talk about where can we find numbers, yeah, next year when we look at their contract, that number can go down, and then we can reallocate it. But right now, that's, that's what we have, and so that's what I'm going with, because I don't have any numbers for any other loss or issue.
And you feel that we, we need five grand for a street maintenance sale, even though about all the other problems do need to be done?
Yes.
And it's not, there's nothing to wiggle there at all?
Yep.
Um so I'm, I'm kind of, I mean, we're getting a lot of like pushback about some of these items as far as like finding where the money can come from. So I would appreciate it specifically with the Green Building Initiative, if when we're not on a spotlight sitting in a room with a bunch of people watching, if maybe you could kind of see if you could speak in full, you know, get five to five grand somewhere, or if we have to transfer it out of reserve. To me, that is a worthy cause, um as we are currently experiencing extreme droughts. And we are projected to have extreme oak wilt, and I know we've got oak wilt here, and I mean, we're just, we're dealing with a lot of environmental disaster year after year right now. And some of the things that we can do in our own home actually do impact our, our natural resources and and their availability for us. Um so I, I just, I think the city needs to be strong on that commitment to our residents of in supporting this program. Even if it turns out it's just educational program where we're able to host more events, where people learn how to be more sustainable and or accountable on their own. Um so I, I, you know, it's just a part of these meetings.
I would, I mean, if you're asking me now where I would take it out of, I would take it out of uh the matching grants. Uh the fifty thousand, that's where I would reduce, I'd put that forty thousand.
Okay.
But I mean, the rest of the council, I mean, if they're, they're in favor of it, um I don't want to get to the next meeting and all of a sudden we'll take it out, but I can, I can change it out, let's five thousand out of that, put it into um building what green uh
Green.
Green Building Initiative.
I will say that when we initially talked about the traffic calming setting, we actually set a limit of fifteen thousand for that. As far as like what we wanted to spend in the city, because we didn't feel after that amount that we'd be getting significant value. Yes, there are traffic calming, so that is another area I feel like could be potentially lowered or tweaked. Um with that in mind, um I'm so sorry, you know, these are alarms for my children, and if I forget to turn them off, everything is a problem. With that in mind, um what I'm, I'm thinking on with that one in particular is that, um like I said, council set a limit for it already at fifteen thousand. And so we should draw back down to that, traffic calming is really important to all of us, but I think it's a good balance within our money on actually doing things. Versus another study, and I think the public would support that. I also dug a little bit deeper into this concept that we would have to have the traffic calming study first.
I will say, I will say on traffic calming, that is an actual quote for doing the uh evaluation in the city, and I would strongly encourage council to do a study about where we need traffic calming devices, rather than us thinking that we're, and putting stuff down without having a study done and seeing exactly where the problems are from a trained professional. But that is, once again, councils, if they want to do it, we can surely do it. So that is, that is one thing that
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
I wanted to verify, I thought we were doing more of a workshop for these particular items.
This is a workshop.
We didn't, we didn't call it a workshop.
The way the agenda is written is a discussion of the possible action, it's not a workshop.
Um so I wanted to verify on if we reduce regarding the uh matching grants. Based on what I've been looking at for grants, possibility of grants, um I think five thousand could be moved out of that to the program that was happy about, would be tried for me for. Um so I wanted to put that in there. I would support that move, the five thousand. Um but the, the point I was trying to make is the, the workshop is that they're more free flowing and less mind focused, because often with talking, the dialogue is being shared when it comes to time.
Yeah, we're, we're being pretty looped with it, but um but it, and it is like I have to, I have to take the blind word, because in my head it was like it's hot, or it's Thursday, we're gonna meet, and so we're gonna have a budget workshop at corporate. And then
That's, that's my fault.
So, and it, you know, so we're posted, and so we, we couldn't post it as a workshop. So, so I'm just sort of letting the information flow, and council behind, if you have additional information that you want to share, that's fine, try to do that.
I just wanted to finish my minute. I dug into uh what was legally required. I dug into what was legally required for us as a city and a study is not legally required as was previously mentioned.
I would like to.
And that thing is not desirable, but I think 15,000 is exactly what council decides to support, so.
I'd like to make a point, but could first and then to you, Mayor Bertam. This has been studied by our roads committee over the years. But I mean, I was getting a call from one of the members of the road committee prior to last year, the panel. It's like, well, Russell, where do you want your, where do you want your speed numbers on guys? Now, we've been looking at that. So there have, there have been citizens surveyed and discussion about where those, where that traffic coming could go. Which could save us their money in our, on a formal study. This is one of those cases where unless it's, you know, just illegal to use common sense and the things, I think that, that we all pretty know, pretty well know where the problem is. So, you know, if we, I, I don't, I don't know that I want to lower the, you know, the 25, but that we can use it for studying and for, so and for everything else. And also we've talked about how, you know, for traffic calming, debt falls with the, with the bond money as well. And we can spend bond money, we can spend chip cell money. Those are all roads projects and, and safety on our roads is a current. And we have, we have lots of places to go and, and pull funds, you know, to make those things happen. So that's, that's not something I'm really worried about. Makes sense?
No, 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 no.
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor Polley?
I just wanted to tell you that I think we need to implement whatever it takes to kind of get a solution right now. What we, what we have on the board is 25,000 for the engineering study. I think it's good to at least have that. You may be able to kind of shake that, that remedy or that review. But not so much necessarily where, because we do know a lot of the places we need them, but also, you know, what are the modern solutions to it? You know, you don't get, put a big asphalt in road hunting, road, or there are modern solutions. So if we can maybe shake that study to solutions, not so much maybe where. That, that may help a little bit, but I'm committed to starting something on a process, whether it's some part of studying and then trying to figure out where, trying to figure out what. And then a process by which we start implementing. So I don't want to back off at 25,000. I think if, if we get to use it for that, we use it in some other fashion to start coming up with a solution. Your problem's getting worse every day on a range of streets like Wood Creek and Champion Circle. Broken on all the streets we know, particularly since we're just about to pay it. So I, I want to keep that number. I don't want to give up on that.
Do we need to adjust the name, I guess, because the question, I'm curious.
We'll, we'll take off the study.
How many times do you owe in a workshop? Two bucks?
No, I, as I mentioned, you know.
It's now just called traffic calming.
I couldn't get it. I couldn't get my item on this agenda, but instead of the next meeting where. The May 24th meeting, we, a motion was made by Potem. Fully to direct that to the study and we get engineers to do a traffic study and traffic calming measures motion was seconded by Mayor Duncan. That's back in May. I, I think we should accelerate this study and do it this year. That way we can take that money out of the street budget. After the loads are done, we need to implement traffic calming immediately. So that's going to be the end of October. We don't want to wait till, or do a study in January, then it's been ready. So I think that we should consider taking this money out of a current fund. But it doesn't make sense in May. Get that study going now, put the money back in next November.
The study takes six weeks. We're starting the road. In very short time, couple of weeks. And one, one thing with the study is that they will do traffic counts along with other stuff. You can't be doing that when you have construction in here. It needs to be done after the road construction. And so we would have to wait until October to really, I mean, if you signed it today, I mean, they wouldn't get in here until October to, to start looking at it. And then it takes six weeks for them to collect data.
But it still means this year's budget.
If you want to, I mean, yes, we could look at that and I mean, if you tell me where you want it to come from, I will surely, we can, we can do a budget then.
I'm, I'm a little concerned about that motion because it wasn't to engage with the traffic calming study. It was to talk to Kate Breeze who, we're also potentially switching engineers to get a quote for one and to bring back information. And it's in June was when we wanted the information to be able to, to plan and then that's been, that we brought back.
We're, just to, just to, for the record, we're not changing engineers right now. We're going to go out for an RFP to get RFPs from engineers, but there's no determination yet that that's going to happen. So I just want to make sure that's clear. The, the motion was for us to go out for the traffic calming study with Kate Breeze. That's what we did. Mr. Foley was part of the customer, Foley was part of that. They came back with a lot higher number. We went back and they came down. And so that is the number that we put in here. If we can keep the number in here or change it or whatever, but that's, that's kind of how that happened. So the only thing that I'm hearing from council is that they want to change $5,000 out of the matching and put that into green building initiatives. For next, for the proposed budget on the 13th. Is that correct or is there more issues?
We have safety issues that I wanted to bring up at City Hall. I want.
We have, we have money for that. We have money for that.
We do?
Yes.
Right. So we're not going to improve the budget. Does the, continue to work with it?
Correct. I will, I will change that one for the next budget meeting and that will be the only change at this time. Now you still have to change it next, next time on the 13th. We can pass it, if we pass it, we will take a vote to, to change it on there. So bring, you know, how much you want and where you want it to come from and, and we can do it on the fly.
In the meantime, if, if the council would have wanted to sit down and do.
My door is always open.
And just, just sort of go through and, and answer that.
Sure, I'd be glad. Yes, I'd be glad to get that.
So moving on to the next item, you know, which is the script and paper we had on the proposed tax rate for a little bit, so you're doing 324.
Really? Okay, so. Where we actually have to set a proposed tax rate. It is required, so I can get with the Hays County so they can completely conform. That means going to the newspaper for notification of the public hearing. The proposed tax rate that you set today is the most that you can set the tax rate at, at our September 13th meeting. You can always reduce it, but you can't over it. Okay, so this is just kind of a preliminary, hey, this is what we're thinking. And, and to let everybody know that our public hearing will be on the 13th. A little bit about the, you don't have to. Well, okay, a little bit, some information on the tax rate with the point two proposed tax rate. That is slightly more than last year's tax rate, but it is underneath the two cents that was talked about for the. For the bonds that we issued for the roads. If you look at the total taxes that were received last year. We received, it's calculated at 585067. This year with the point two tax rate, it is 709187. That's a difference of 12419. Basically, if you look into the budget on page under debt service, this is what we pay for the debt and the principal in the given year. That amount this year has increased by 100 and. 23,000. So the difference is all in the debt service. Also too, the no new revenue tax rate, MNO rate last year was at point 1152. This year it's at point 1023, which actually the MNO is our maintenance and operations. It's basically keep city hall open, but the. The building initiative and all maintenance. Paying better, okay? So last year with the tax rate at point 1152, we got 366,000 roughly. This year, the MNO rate is point 1023, which is the reduction. And so we only get 362, so actually for maintenance and operations, for actually running the city, we're actually collecting 3,752 dollars less than we did last year. On the debt service side, like I said, it's all the 124,000. Dollars is mainly going to the debt service. So that's where the, the, the increases.
And even to that. Point 0977 for the general rate, it's set by the county.
Correct, correct.
Just under 77 after they tell us.
Right. They give us, you know, they, they provide the tax value. We tell them what our principal and interest are for our bonds. And then they say, okay, you have to collect this year or next year it's going to be point 0977. And that's how much you have to, your, your, your debt service rate has to be in order to cover your debt service. And so what we have to do is come up with, okay, well, what's our MNO rate? And this year it's that point 1023. If you have the point 1023 plus the point 0977, that gets you to the point 200 number, which will be the proposed tax rate. I know that's a lot of numbers and I was just feeling it all. So if I could use anybody, I will gladly go slower. So if there's no question, somebody would need to make a motion for the proposed tax rate.
I would end the motion to set the proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2023, 24 at point 2000. Including point 1023 for MNO and point 9, point 0977 for finance.
So I need to repeat all that. I remember last year we actually had a reading document.
That's the next one.
Okay.
That's on 13th.
All right, second.
I just want to say thank you so much for creating my budget and being able to bring that MNO down. I love that our citizens have repeatedly asked us to decrease spending or at least decrease the taxes that they have to pay for funding. So that is great. We're going to do that reduction and I'm really grateful that we were able to say under that who said increase that we talked about, who would be planning for the bond election. So even though it didn't necessarily come from the debt service itself, but if we continue to keep it under that, that rate and, and kind of hold true to that happens to the, the citizens, but I like that. So I mean, yes, on the tax rate, I love it. And then under the voter approval rate, I think that's great.
Anything else? Do you say a prayer?
Councilmember Chris Gerhardt.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hendrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines.
Aye.
Mayor for Timbuktu Foley.
Aye.
Councilmember Linnea Bailey.
Aye.
Thank you.
You know, now you said that's the next meeting for when you did that.
Correct, the next meeting, September 13th.
Yeah, I, I would, I would welcome what we said. Let's note, note later than 4:50. Be back in your seat, watch your clock. So. And I've got. We'll give you.
They work. But they don't, they don't have that many shapes, right? You have to be ready. You have to be ready.
Hearing into add an interim motion on permitting a new short term rentals within the city of the three. And so such time that the Texas legislature here in Texas can afford a permitting a clear and concise set of regulations and guidance. Trying to do is put that on.
Did you get that?
I did, I'm writing. I think you thought I'm gonna.
Yeah, so is that um I I know that we can do uh moratorium in first. Basically, we need that.
So all this does is set a publication error. Your language itself more foreign, you can change prior to going on the event. You'd like to work with Kevin myself or Mayor Rasco to tweak the language of the board form itself. I'll probably have that draft uh in front of uh Kevin's mind. I'd say equal today to latest. Uh it doesn't necessarily need to be changed in the body of this ordinance, which only calls me publicer.
Okay, then in that case, I got the product, but I guess my concern is Mayor Rasco had mentioned that um. We have the eclipse coming next April. And everybody is coming to Wimberly because we've got the best stuff, best viewing. There is not going to be another total eclipse through twenty thirty as in the United States that's viewable. So there I'm trying to get my kids here and plane tickets. They're all getting scares. What I don't want to have is that we don't have this door coming in place. When the um everybody said, hey, I can bounce below the night, it's not mental, and then they go, no. So that's that was my.
Yeah, most of the on the plan, I mean, if we have the the public hearing, you know, come out of the public hearing and make a motion, that that was my question. Cause I originally submitted it as until that time as, you know, there's clarification from.
Moratorium, moratorium can be a hundred and twenty days or less. And they can be, they can be essentially renewed. Forever. I don't want to say forever. They can be renewed for a while. So uh if the council were at some point to adopt a hundred and twenty day moratorium, the council would come back, they'd come back at the next meeting and cancel that. Or they could come back three months into it and extend it. You guys have no way we'd be limited in doing what we feel is appropriate.
Yeah, the this resolution or this this ordinance um you know, does mention the um. The lack clarity from the Supreme Court and and the state legislature. So I think that would follow through. And my question was, can you do a a moratorium of a hundred and twenty days or until, you know, so it's just a hundred and twenty days.
Yeah, and and I think I think uh the next meeting, what we're talking about the moratorium, uh I'll do my best both in a. Little one page digest memo and during any debate or discussion to prevent any of these. Yeah, it isn't simply just a calendar issue, no, no moratoriums are getting put into place by state law.
Right, and I did talk with um Chairman Davenport and and he's on his, basically going from bringing it back up. You know, for their consideration, it is that they they have a hearing, they're all on it.
So just for clarification, what we previously spoke about with the uh. At the presentation on April uh well regarding uh the two possibles that PNC brought before us would still be on the table. If we so chose.
Correct. Yeah, there's nothing that would prevent the council from both adopting moratorium and then subsequently adopting recommendations from PNC.
And the discussion take vote?
I want to just touch base real quick from a timing perspective. I I think what I kind of envisioned is a PNC meeting first that evening, today, five P M. A specific time set for the joint public hearing called six forty. And then the rest of the council's meeting after that. So if you all have an idea of when in the. You know, six thirty plus hour you want to have the meeting, we have to actually set that as a time for both.
Yep, six thirty.
So also for for clarification, this is basically the PNC's public hearing, city council with the primary things being justice and none of the things, is that correct?
I mean, uh PNC may have other items on their agenda, we may have other items far extra, but this would enable the joint public hearing to take place. And and any moratorium would not be implemented effective that night. It would require one more meeting to take place.
And so. To describe the timeframe, PNC would need, then there'd be a more uh public hearing between the twelve others present, and then council would be having. Correct, and. Are we setting the time for council meeting or the public hearing?
I I mean, I think six thirty makes sense, but I think we're like six thirty to five to do the whole uh moment of silence, you know. But but y'all y'all do that too too fit. I I got it wrong.
So we're having our joint public hearing be pulled.
Well, or whatever time you guys set.
The the public hearing I just suggested would occur at six thirty, because that is the time that residents have typically been offered at home since that, right? Um so that's the only time period we need to set. The other meeting, that would set, because it's a special meeting, um the the times to adjust on the stage depending on whatever agenda or whatever.
And I I do want to remind everybody, uh and I have talked to Mayor Pretend about this, um I am in hiring.
What?
I am in hiring. So it is a second meeting. So. Everybody.
I'll go with staff and in terms of how we're going to roll this out, I mean, the whole, you know, public hearing is going to be a little bit named, but. Is there any, I'm sorry, is there, is there any possibility of having the public hearing and then scrolling into a regular, specific session, voting on what we talked about in the public hearing?
Of course. Of course.
Okay.
Yeah, but 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 y'all, a moratorium requires two weeks.
Okay, so all right, so we have the public hearing and come back and vote, or another?
Uh that night, number one, the next meeting, number two.
I have one question. If if we have questions we would like answered about moratoriums in the meeting, because I had one for today. Would you like those if you think you're just going to create a compromise and compromise is the thing on your own?
Go ahead and set them in advance, if you would please. I'd be happy to try to get much of that stuff knocked out in advance as possible.
Okay.
And 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 if there are certain questions that different council members ask, we'll create a running list and and hopefully that will, you know, maybe provide a basis for a, you know, memo that I created.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. To call this meeting, um Deborah Hines. Certainly by Councilmember Drummers. Right, in my second. Did you?
Right, yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Bob Hendrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines.
Aye.
Mayor Pretend Brent Foley.
Aye.
Councilmember Linnea Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grimmer.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much for passing the meeting on this later. And we'll move on to item number six, discuss the tactical action. Mandatory water use restrictions um in accordance with the H C D program, we're not operating in districts mandatory uh restrictions. And we'll discuss and take tactical action on several matters um that are all related and we'll take them one at a time. Um one is the report from Aqua Texas and the H T G C C. Um that sort of outlines what you know state for for is and that's. the handout, and similar, and obviously them at homes. Um, there's the Aqua Texas drought tendency plan that was that was a handout. Um, and so basically what we're asking for in this is to, um, essentially to say, whatever update is what we can do, we're in a supportive intent to make it happen. There are, there are confines, whether it's mutation, education, you know, however we can, but the uh the point is that because our water system, we can't mandate it. You know, we can't tell people they have to, but we can support the other uh the district and.
I move that we approve the interlocal agreement on Hayes County, City of Wimberly, Keywood Creek, the watershed association, and the meadows that are for water and the environment regarding implementation of the Cypress Creek watershed protection plan.
Um, but before before we get too far down that road, um, I got word yesterday um that the county had some minor changes, so the the document that we have in the packet is not what the final document is going to be, so um, the gist of it is there, you know, we we, I mean, it's it's not exactly how they changed it, but Mr. Shaw said that things that the county was interested in doing, so um, there is a another draft. Um, but it hasn't been, like, we can't, we can't vote to approve this specific, you know, the goal. I mean, suppose we can, you know, approve the initiative to move forward with the interlokal.
We just bump that in, so we have the draft in, by order of.
Yeah, for interlo, for interlo, we'll dump dump that on PNC, I think that would be appropriate.
That I withdraw. And.
We did, um, we did put in the budget, so um, this went down for the first year, there's of course the what the uh what was outlined in the.
All right, I move that we discuss and take possible action on the Wood Creek Resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh eight dash two three dash oh one implementing temporary water demand mitigation measure.
All right, sorry.
Okay, that's all.
Fifty-three.
All right, so our resolution, um, and we have uh Councilmember Hines move, who was that, Grummer?
Sure.
Kind of comment, basically, again, it's just echoing that concept of um. The city can only do so much, and we can control the things that we have ordinances around and the things that we issue permits for. Um, and that's about it, and so, I mean, I I racked my brains to think if we missed anything here, and I really couldn't come up with anything that because we can't control new builds, we can't control somebody needing to, you know, address, it's like having a bathroom or, you know, that kind of stuff, that's technically not ours to control, but this seems like a safe list to me, that's why I liked it.
You know, basically, what this resolution does is, you know, allow us to restrict that that simply not to permit, you know, items that come to them that use, you know, use water out of the, out of the system. You know, if this, if it doesn't work, you know, then then we can't permit it, so if somebody comes to us for a river pool, or a pool, you know, a spa, you know, anything of that, we're going to say is not at this time. Um, and then we will continue to work with that with Texas on if, because the, and it's uh, if they if they can, let's have a defense of a development agreement with them for for a pipe or a pipeline, like, or all of the above. Um, you know, the the goal is to touch our feeding one water um throughout the valley. Um, and we have the whole heart of the support, uh, of the city of Wimberly and the county, um, to work together. And it's kind of what Aqua Texas has been looking for is a is a valid life master plan that instructs them and gives them the guidance they need for what they should and and couldn't do. Um, without being, without having sit them, you know, they will, you know, really appreciate that he did this, and they're willing to listen, and that's what I would say.
And to clarify, all outdoor water use, which is strictly prohibited right now, which is what kind of gives us that avenue to actually say, you know, there's no wiggle room here. Like, the the conservation district has basically said this is not allowed, so we're backing that, you know, that was not issued in the permit, so we're not really going beyond the regulation set by the actual regulatory body.
Correct.
Uh, can you recognize, um, regarding the absolute uh no outdoor water. I was listening to Mr. Jacobson, and we are, there is an endangerment to our trees and rushing things. I can see grown lawn watering, but I looked up the same effective stage four restrictions. And they're saying irrigating of landscape areas are designated to two time movies, so, and six to ten is game as well. That's also what currently in San Marcos and dripping spring. So stage four, you have two days, you want your shrubs or tree. Uh, there's hundreds, are there, there's seventy thousand people in San Marcos, and we've got eighteen hundred. It seems like, I just want to, it's not a popular thing to talk about, but um I mentioned some of you, when I lived in California, Malibu, uh, from twenty years ago, had, we had a two-year drought. And so City of Malibu declared no outdoor watering whatsoever. So Malibu, there's an alley that was, and some people was done there, no bed, and and some people complied. Then in the fall, there came a wildfire, and all the people who complied blocked their homes. It confirmed right up that ground, the people who didn't, didn't lose their homes. We have a water dry area, and I get it, I just want to make the, to make the point that um we don't want to be a dead city either.
Um, if I if I might, um, your example of San Marcos and dripping um have surplus water, which we do not have. Um, and our our mandates are coming from the the water company um who controls it, we have no say, we can't say, go ahead and water twice a week, we can't say that. Uh, we don't have the power to do that in the city. Um, and that fall follows from um the groundwater conservation district. So the groundwater conservation that's acceptable, Aqua has has put them in place, we are expecting them um until we get out of stage four, and yet, they're red absolutely. Um, and we've gone to the, we've gone to the public works and said, hey, can you tell people to not put their cigarettes, you know, onto the grounds? As as Councilmember Hambrich said, Jake was was saying, you know, go go park on the ground, you know, do this more things, you know, to keep us safe. Um, but although, you know, your your yard still has, right, you know, leftover from the storm, you know, you haven't heard of that, that the fire. So the 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 fire and the water go together, um, and we have to watch it, but we we simply can't say, okay, everybody set their water. We can't, we can't do it.
Fine, good, real quick, um, I'm seeing that we need to reconcile what what we see, either in the city, you see stage four, it says absolutely no, excuse me, outside watering. And yet, this document that we have here, the state of January twenty-four
Yes.
says once weekly watering scheduled for hermerschool activity during day four.
Okay, so then, yeah, we could have, they could be sending up that updated. They have, they have it.
Okay, thanks, Wendy, I'm sorry, uh, you know, twenty-eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, the um Aqua Texas recently came out with the no outside watering whatsoever as a response to um direction from the groundwater conservation district, but also taking the lead of what's the water, there's no outside watering in the valley. You know, Wimberly Water, you know, which um does a great job with their system. And, you know, their line loss is minimal, um, their customer service is great, um, but they have told their customers don't do it, or we will shake them off. And they will, and they have.
I think a lot of people do that comparison of other cities and our neighbors, with, and I'm I'm even hearing in the audience right now, without always referring that just because we all live close to each other, we're not necessarily tapping into the same water sources. Some of our cities are getting water from other places, uh, or, you know, uh, they they have a different kind of, their their city owns their water, so the city gets to make more decisions than we do, so we're kind of at that that mercy of Aqua in the groundwater conservation district. And the last thing I think a lot of residents in Wood Creek haven't understood is that actually part of our city is in the Jacobswell groundwater management district, which means that when we are in drought stages, that area, that zone, I think is actually the right name, goes they topples first, meaning they get the strictest restrictions first. So when you're trying to communicate with your neighbor letters, right, and when they're going to talk about the letters, people aren't able to, but if your neighbor has stricter drought restrictions than you do in a letter, that is why, and that's something that we've just recently realized from the city and learned um through, you know, better communication from the people in charge, that part of our city is like mine helps, it's a different letter than even city hall. So I was really confused at one point in the city myself about why the restrictions seem to be different messaging, and we we actually tried to address that when we talked to our person, and she was sort of like, well, we don't, we didn't create that zone, that zone's coming from the regulatory body, that conservation district again. And so we we were just kind of like, hey, will you look into basically unifying Wood Creek, so we're all on the same plan, and even if that means the strictest plan, just so that we can kind of improve communication, she wasn't able to confirm that's going to happen, because, again, Aqua doesn't set these regulation standards. Um, but they do set their drought plan. So she was like, well, if we can, if we can get it in our drought plan, we'll look at that for Wood Creek, because it does make more sense for the whole city to be on the same communication, same water system plan, essentially.
Are there any other discussion on this item number C? We vote on the uh revolution.
Councilmember Deborah Hines.
Aye.
Mayor Lieutenant Brett Foley.
Aye.
Councilmember Lenea Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hambrich.
Aye.
Thank you very much. So Lenea, um, you wanted to speak for the city.
No, Lydia. That's Lenea.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, but.
That's okay, um, I'm Lydia Johns, and I am the vice chair of planning and zoning. Um, I saw a recap on Nextdoor that said that uh planning and zoning's recommendation is that the city survey to address allowing above-ground pools should be postponed until the city of Wood Creek is in state full of drought restrictions or less. I actually made the motion in the meeting, our recommendation from planning and zoning that was that no action on the ordinance or a survey or anything take place until we're at stage one. So I just wanted to clarify that, because we didn't, it wasn't just about the survey, we discussed it in great depth, and I was the one that made the motion, the motion carried. And uh, so I just wanted to clarify that.
You have a question for that, I must say.
Yes, yes.
This is on Nextdoor sometime, aren't true?
No, it's here.
Yeah, yeah.
It was, it was said in the meeting, so I just want to say I'm sorry, because I didn't say that in the meeting, I broke what was said, and I do apologize for not watching the PNC meeting and clarifying that motion more appropriately.
Okay.
I'd like to apologize too, because obviously I was operating, offering that, and my mistake.
Yeah.
Well, the recommendation that's in our report here is that PNC recommends that council postpone any further action on the water performance changes, and does not know that the city will.
Okay, and I also have a point of clarification, can I ask, Roger? If if we do this joint meeting between planning and zoning and city council, planning and zoning meets first, can we reaffirm the previous recommendations that we made, council?
Uh, y'all can make any sort of recommendations you like, absolutely.
Okay, that's what I need to note it. All right, that's all I had to say, thank you all very much for listening, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we need a motion on B.
A move that we accept the PNC uh report.
I second.
Mr. Mayor, is that's accepting the report, is that also accepting its recommendations?
No, that'll be a future time.
All right, just one question, uh, I mean, doesn't six cities sort of implement against the recommendations in six eighty anyway?
Yeah. But when you can't, can't do the ground pool, then if you can, if you can. All right, so we go to this motion, accept the report.
Mayor Lieutenant Brett Foley.
Aye.
Councilmember Lenea Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hambrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines.
Aye.
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, I remember B, uh, it's Councilmember.
Aye.
Thank you. Um. Uh, the uh Wood Creek Resolution, uh, approving and enacting the rubber of the city.
I recommend that council approve and enact the drought response protocol by resolution.
I second.
Mary.
Yes, listen.
All right, there is, um, the city has no regulatory authority here, we've already established that, all we can do is communicate and fill in any gaps from Aqua and make the Aqua and groundwater conservation district information more available, along with burn ban considerations and tips for how to address these things. We talked about this drought response protocol a couple of months ago, no direct action been taken, but we collectively seem to agree this was a good idea to have something in place. The uh G M of the Hayes Trinity Groundwater Conservation District reviewed this plan and said it looks really great, he gave one recommendation that had been invented in the draft, I love to tell council that actually in your, the papers that were on your desk, there is the updated copy, copies, there was a little snafu with getting, uh, Mayor Rascal wanted to make some updates and to what was submitted originally, and what you have in your packet is the original submission, what you have on your desk, and there's some up there for the public, is actually the updated cleaner version that's had some input from Mayor Rascal, so please look at the one, not in your packet, but what's on your desk here. Um, we all know there's been an unprecedented drought here, this combined with our nearly double population due in the last ten years has created an unstable demand on our aquifer. So this will not end just when we get out of drought, if that makes sense, if if the rains come, it, we will likely be right back carrying it. So with significant fears of water shortage looming over all water users in the valley, the most stringent water restrictions to date in this area are now currently in place and mandated by the East Trinity Groundwater District and implemented by our water supply company, Aqua. This has prompted council members in Wood Creek to ask what more can the city of Wood Creek do to help its residents be informed and participate in this essential widespread community effort to reduce consumption and conserve. Thus, the drought response protocol for the city of Wood Creek was drafted. What this does is it's going to essentially give the map for our city staff, the emergency management person of like, what actions do I need to take at each level, and we're in drought one, it says do this, drop, it's drought stage four, do this. And if you look, it it's pretty common sense, you're like, why do we need to say this, well, because a checklist is always helpful, so we don't miss things. So new items would be making sure we're communicating burn ban information as well. We're also going to make a more specific webpage if we enacted this today. Um, we also kind of take that extra step of saying what the city's goals are in this, um, we give tips and tricks, we do things that are in a. Um we give tips and tricks, we do things that are an immediate action call, like uh checking for running toilets, making sure you're reviewing your bills to check your monthly usage, moving plants and doors. It it's a, it's a bigger plan than just the city's communication. It kind of touches upon odd areas that we could possibly help our residents with understanding. Um something that came to mind when we were advocating for tall grass mowing, mowing can actually cause fires. Uh some people. So uh not recently, but we talked about, but uh so just some of these things, people don't realize, for example, when we're in a burn ban, especially a critical status burn ban, you're not even supposed to be drilling outdoors. That's something we learned in the ordinance review committee recently when we were reviewing um chapters ninety-three and ninety-four, which was news to me, right? I've lived here forever and I didn't know that. So um that's kind of the goal to increase communication. And if you'll notice, stage four, can stage three things really amp up, right? We're making sure to send out very specific communications that are not tied in with other city communications. We're making sure that we start holding these sort of uh stakeholder meetings with like the golf course and CYJ to ensure people aren't, um you know. Kind of just getting missed because we get really busy, staff has a ton to do. So by providing a checklist that would help them, also these kind of things, these emergency response programs are very common for cities to have. Like we just did one, a bigger one for just like general emergencies. So this is just a supportive document to sort of, you know, create that roadmap for what we should be doing. And we can also make it public based and so citizens understand what we should be doing. Because what I've learned most in the last month is not only are people confused, the communication has been lacking, but they're also looking to the city of Wood Creek to tell them what they need to know. And we've increased our presence on social media, we've done a great job there. Um and so basically the goal of this would just be to disseminate the regulatory information through the city as well because we have learned we cannot necessarily rely on the letters coming from Aqua.
Further discussion? No, I I like it. Um I mean, it is a protocol which means it can, uh um as it goes, it's not a, it's not a part of the basket. Um if uh if we learn new information, it will be right at this point. I do like it. And the the changes that we made would not, depending on what you see in the in the packet and what you see in front of you are pretty close. I'm just a journalism major and um so I have to tweak it. It did my blood. So no further discussion, I'll vote.
Councilmember Linnea Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hambrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Breckley.
Aye, thank you very much. Um there's one more piece that tied to this section, um there, and that's the um the alert. This is a, you can see it in color in your packet. Um so I just did the, uh this, you know, seven again, it's sort of taking some of the, some of the protocol information, it's putting it into, into the visual form. Um right down to the cracked earth on the background, um nice touch. Uh so there's nothing really, uh these are, these are like helpful hints, which, you know, I mentioned before that, you know, we talked to the city of Beverly about, about doing a communication plan where we would bring the information. Uh together, you know, for the valley. And this is the kind of thing that would work really well, that's, you know, attractive, it's interesting, so this is the kind of thing that we're going to. But for now, just stick this on the doors.
I recommend that council approve the flyer, authorize the furniture for the cost of printing, and authorize council member Hines to oversee the citizen committee to distribute to all homes in the city of Wood Creek, Kristen and Bob.
I second.
So um in the drought response protocol, there are some things that staff would have to get in action about. And this flyer is sort of meant to immediately address that, take that burden off of staff, which is also why I am asking that we authorize a citizen committee to give these distributions. So we're not asking staff to take three days out of the next week to drive around the golf cart. If that volunteers lined up, we'll, we'll break down the streets, we'll get these taping doors. Um it'll kind of uh take that immediate burden off. Uh so all we would have was the cost of the the flyers be printed in color actually. So again, in your packet, you see a prettier colored version, but what you have on your desk is the updated version after Mayor Rasko uh got in there with his journalism degrees and it made it better. Um so, you know, like I said, the the goal is to get these out as soon as possible. They echo a lot of the communication for our receiving, but what we've learned over and over is that the mailers aren't always reaching the people who live in the houses. So by going around and taking these on the doors, we know we are directly impacting everybody in the citizen and very quickly, or everybody in the city and very quickly. Um on here, I know, so we actually talked about the idea of parking on tall grass. Um our ordinances, they're not at twelve inches, they're at six inches. Um so you know, that's already built into the ordinances, you're already not supposed to be doing that. I also looked at the the recommendation for the A and M forestry people, and they really talked about the height of the grass being the most important, not necessarily just parking on dry grass. Um so that's something we can add in social media posts with like a, you know, it's not, we couldn't fit everything on the flyer, but if you're hearing these like helpful tips and tricks, staff can put that on the upcoming social media posts that will be going out. Um so that's one of them. And then, you know, again, the idea of encouraging people to mow tall grass is a little bit problematic if I can start fires and which I believe one of the fires that happened did start from mowing. So um anyway.
I could just, I can use the minute here that I didn't do in my journalistic. So, you know, one of the things I've been, I've been trying to think of is like everywhere, every time we have a chance to get people to sign up or email, the email and text what. This was, I was just down about, they don't do anything for the city.
I recommend that we add the amendment to the, of the email list of the flyer. I think just email is fine.
And one other concern that I heard from several citizens, and that is that um using your soaker hoses to water the edge of your foundation to prevent uh cracking of. That should be a major concern because you constantly work for five, twenty thousand dollars to repair a foundation if uh if that kind of contraction occurs and and your people's doors don't close, they're cracked, their their pipes break. All of those sorts of things, very minimal water, but it's very necessary.
Have to get with with Aqua, um and we don't have the authority to tell people. We don't have the authority to tell people that they can water their, that they can't water, that they can't work that, we just can't, we don't have that authority.
Should be, but maybe they shouldn't.
And again, I do know that um there was one instance where it was pretty bad and um and that uh there were referred to protected, I don't know what name of that. Um but it's one of the things that, okay, well, well, you know, but you're, you're only using two dollars a gallon a month anyway. You know, we'll watch it, you know, I mean, I I would, I would go for that, but we just can't say, oh, go ahead and water your foundation. Right. Because other people said, well, you know, but my pool is going to be damaged when it evaporates out, and yes, it is, and that's going to be very expensive. But, you know, we can't allow popping up, and we don't have that authority.
What should I do?
So yeah, just to be clear, to really stress that city community will not be recommending anything that is in violation with the regulatory laws. You can't, it's a simply ban. As much as we'd love to help people, I mean, my own house is actually, don't tell anybody that buys it in the future, but the foundation is shifting and we have a crack in one of our doors, it's no longer working. So yeah, I feel that, um I get it, but.
Our time, our time. All right, can we start this running?
Um. Fire has me to face. My neighbor has a lot of degree, broken branch, just a lot in her yard.
Yeah.
She has financial issues and, you know, some elderly issues. Is there any way that we could help with what really seems like an extreme danger?
It's um, that would be something that we can can consider, it's not part of the individual. Okay, I agree with, now I've heard others, people that, that, you know, they, and just walking around. You know, you can tell that, you know, something, something happened and these folks, you know, just couldn't get their degree out for for a break. So maybe that we can work with ways connections and do something, you know, you know, in in the near future, but uh go again and again, second on the air.
All right, all that.
Councilmember Chris Grummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hambrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Breckley.
Aye.
Councilmember Linnea Bailey.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Um last item on the agenda, number seven, discussing the appropriate act of um of our ordinance review committee reports. Come from.
I recommend that council accept the ordinance review committee report and direct staff to draft for ordinance update documents for all three chapters in ninety, ninety-three and ninety-four. In the report incorporating all ordinance review committee suggestions for review and consideration by council at the second meeting in September. I did send that to you.
I got it coming for a minute.
Um essentially, uh ordinance review has made this report, they've got some great suggestions in in it. Um I'm recommending that instead of trying to debate each of those suggestions and all of that right now, we have uh staff go and then draft those ordinances for consideration. It would separate each one into its own thing. I'm also, I'm going to ask that if we move forward with this, that they put it in a workshop format for workshopping those ordinances so that if council members would like to discuss any of the recommendations by ORC more specifically, or remove some or add some, that we have that. Um liberty and debate discussion to do that if it's in a workshop. Um that's my recommendation at this time, essentially. This is feedback from citizens on ordinances that directly impact citizens in our community. This feedback to me is essential for good self-governance. And I believe that each of these chapters in the recommendation presented in this report deserves a full discussion and consideration by council. Um obviously, if at the time when we're reviewing them, we decide not to move forward with changes on one, um we could do that in a later meeting. All this item would do would be to ask staff to put them in ordinance format so that if we were ready to move forward or suggest changes, we have that next draft available.
Further discussion? I'd like to make an amendment to include these documents alongside the ordinance in the packet. Standard of rules.
I second that amendment.
Oh. What, I'm sorry, what are you referring to, these documents?
I'm sorry, the package documents that we're seeing here.
The change, track changes, yeah. That's that we're definitely.
And I guess they've also added some additional materials for us to review on, I think it supports some of the decisions that they were asking for changes or whatever, and that can just be in the packet, it doesn't need to be in ordinance.
Right.
Perfect.
All right, so there's an amendment um from councilmember Grummer. Signifying councilmember Hines to include these documents with the drafted order. Uh we vote on that. I would comment, Mayor, first of all, I I believe that uh that ordinance review committee has, has worked diligently at this, um some of these changes are, they almost seem obvious that they should have occurred. And because of that, I would uh agree with with most of these things, and I know we'll have a chance to look it, look them over again in more detail in the near future. One of the things I was thinking about, and we've spoken about before, I think, a little bit, but for each one of these ordinances, what is the staff time that would be used? How much time would it take for them to do that? And these are relatively simple, when you look at each of these three ordinances with track changes that are there, this is relatively simple. Um the attorney fees that are required, uh maybe as much as a hundred fifty dollars a page or something like that for review, is it not that much? How much would it be to score?
Oh yeah.
Yeah, I charge it hourly rate, but it probably won't be beating on the score, so I don't want to get too far in the hunt, so. I I mean, to me, the the actual grabbing of the ordinance is relatively easy.
Yeah.
Um I I think the best thing that the council could do to myself or my uh subsequent city attorney is tell us what you want in and what you want out. Right, I mean, uh we can certainly draft up the first two pages of a of a of an ordinance, amending the code, and then slap on the back these track changes. But regardless of whether it happens at that meeting or prior to the ordinance being drafted, the council will have to say what they want in and what they want out. So I I I will do whatever y'all think is best. Um it it doesn't really cause too much of a problem. I I don't think this is a situation where there can be occurrence, massive legal costs anyways.
Thank you.
Um I guess just to kind of answer your concern, um like you said, the the upfront part about just putting it in ordinance format is is one cost, right? And if y'all, I mean, my goal was if we put it in a workshop and we would like to tease these items out, that gives us more time to do that than at the end of a meeting when we've got three things to talk about all of a sudden. You know, so we're accepting the report because that's the natural next step. We're also in in doing this, kind of setting up precedent for how anything like this would proceed essentially, meaning like, we've got the report, we say staff, they go ahead and draft these ordinances. There, you know, maybe council looks at it, then it says, I don't like this, I do like this. And then maybe that's when the lawyer come, you know, give that review as well of, okay, this isn't going to work, or, you know, we put these in. And so um that's kind of what we've been lacking in that that process as well. So that's why I'm not trying to edit these in this meeting just for conversational purposes and length of meeting. That's why I would like to see them on a workshop in the future. And ultimately, if if what we've already recommended addresses what uh city attorney Roger Morton said was, he's not having to edit the ordinance recommendations yet. He's essentially just slapping in what ORC has already done, and they've already got all the track changes and stuff there for us. So um that burden has been moved.
Yes. Um to verify, so what we're talking about now is creating these ordinances, creating these packets, bringing them back to us, council works with magic. And then at that point, we may or may not choose to go, hey, city attorney, could you give your advice? And that's where possible, more expensive come up. We're not there, we're just before you.
Yeah, I mean, if you guys are going to have a workshop, I I don't think you need a draft ordinance front of, right? The purpose of the workshop is figure out which of ORC's recommendations y'all like and which you don't. And then once the council has made that decision, you tell, bring me back in ordinance, you know, for the very next meeting. Now, I mean, we can do that prior to workshop, but I just want to make sure if if you envision the workshop as discussion only and no action, then I would say you don't need a draft ordinance at that time. You simply need to provide myself and the next city attorney guidance on which of the ORC green the breads you want in a draft ordinance for the next meeting.
I think what I'm saying is I would like to see them all in an ordinance that's ready to go. Because what I've also learned is in the ordinance is the wear and pattern. And um justifying changes and things like that, some of that discussion kind of helps here where we're going with things. Also, we could come out of a workshop and if we don't have a lot of things to change or say, then we would be ready to move forward. Or if there's only minor edits, that's something in the past, we've been able to say, okay, we've got minor amendments, we're ready to move forward outside the workshop. Um that was kind of my goal. Um you know, I I think with these chapters in particular, a lot of it is like, councilmember Hambrich said, kind of common sensey. You know, I I, you know, I get what you're saying, I think in the future we could kind of stage it out more like that. I just feel like um, you know, it's, it's good to have all of your asses and to understand what's justifying any of the changes. And sometimes that pops up with, oh, actually this changed, you know, we've learned something in looking at the code to try to write that portion. I mean, that's happened to me before anyway.
All right, well, we do have an amendment um to the motion that is still on the floor to um include this document along with any um any materials from staff.
Councilmember Deborah Hines.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Breckley.
Aye.
Councilmember Linnea Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bob Hambrich.
Aye.
All right, so the, um, the main motion is, um, a little longer than what it's on here, but, do you have it?
Mr. Councilmember Hines was standing up to send it.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, councilmember Hines made the motion to recommend that council accept the ordinance review committee report and direct staff draft the full ordinance update documents for all three chapters, ninety, ninety-three and ninety-four in the report incorporating all ordinance review committee suggestions for review and consideration by council at the second meeting in September.
Uh, are y'all, are y'all going workshop? Or no, don't need it?
I'd like to see, so in a meeting, we can hold a workshop portion of the meeting and then go into the meeting.
Yeah, and, and because this meeting is a special meeting either way, that's the fact we're, we just want to make sure September twentieth is your target date?
If that didn't work for.
That works, that happens, definitely do.
I didn't include the workshop part because I thought that was kind of just like administrative, like scheduling of the, the agenda. If we need to add that, I would be happy to amend.
Oh, it's in the agenda.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll go to the main motion.
Councilmember Bob Hambrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Breckley.
Aye.
Councilmember Linnea Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummer.
Aye.
Thank you very much. I move the motion to pass, uh, and we are better.
That is.
Maybe now, uh, it'll be later.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hey, under three hours, even with the rain.